Bills. Bowman. Coganauer. Crowe. Curtis. Hasbargen. Johnson. Crumwede. Lemee. McGuinness. McTaggart. Offill. Hersley. Raymond. Schur.
Yep.
Sticknot. Whitlow. Levin Presant.
Okay, Mrs. Offill?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have Avram Bolichsner, good to run from the lobby chairs of State Department.
Thank you. I'd like to just spend some time thinking. We're in trying times. Flooding in Iroquois County, in this city, Watsika and many other cities around. Your Father in Heaven, we give you thanks because you're still in charge. It may seem that it isn't, but as I read the Bible, you said that you're with us, but it didn't say that we would never have any tragedy. And you would always be there, so we come to you right now and ask for your mercy and wisdom. As we make decisions in regards to the people in this community and Iroquois County. And we pray, Lord, that you would have mercy and give us wisdom to understand and how to best solve problems that arise. Blessed are these people here at this council. I thank you, Lord, for all those that were volunteering their time to evacuate people. Give them shelter, provide food. We give you thanks for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the clerk will read the call for a special board meeting.
To this adjutant, we, the undersigned members of the county board of Iroquois County, Illinois, do hereby request you to call a special meeting of the county board of Iroquois County, Illinois, to meet at the administrative center in the city of Watsika, Illinois on Wednesday, February 28, 2018, at 9:00 AM for the purpose of discussion and vote on extending the declaration of disaster in Iroquois County and discussion and possible action on telecommunicator issues. This was signed by county board members John Schur, Jed Whitlow, Ernest Curtis, Charles Dahl, Marvin Sticknot, Barlafle and Donna Crowe.
Okay, next is the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, knowing the priorities of the bar, if Mr. Sisi is going, I would move that we change the agenda and move the discussion regarding the extension of the timeframe of the disaster declaration up and file the discussion action regarding the telecommunicator issues.
Got that. Does everybody understand the motion? Is there any questions or comments regarding that?
I never heard it.
Okay, anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. We'll begin our discussion and action regarding extending the time period of the disaster declaration in Iroquois County. Eric, would you come forward, please, and address the board?
Sitting off. I sound like I'm taking the day off. I apologize. I'll do my best to use my diaphragm. On the 21st of February, the county board chairman declared a countywide disaster. This is in response to flash roads, small creek and river flooding across Iroquois County. Areas that eyes and minds that are, received more damage than others include, in those that lasted through more extensive water, Sisna Park, Stockland, Goodline, Quainville, Milford, Woodland. Rural areas along Iroquois River, north of Watsika and the city of Watsika itself. The following day, the city of Watsika declared a citywide disaster. And then the following day after that, the state of Illinois declared disaster after the governor, state rep Bennett, state rep Sen- state senator Barrickman and US Congressman Indigard visited the shelter. In that time, there have been a number of evacuations, a majority of them into the city of Watsika. An incident command post was set up by the city of Watsika Fire Department, and they used multiple local mutual aid resources through their Mavis box alarms. Some even came from Kenlin. There was a huge truck that came up from limestone, so on and so forth. That incident command post has been deactivated. There are no more evacuations, as I'm sure everybody can tell. Waters have, for the most part, received. There are a number of rural roads that are still flooded and a couple streets here in the city of Watsika. We have a, there are multiple forms of damage assessment. There is not only what Mr. Yergo must complete, which he has already started. There is also damage assessment from Red Cross, who just assesses needs and then does damage assessment as I do, which is part of the process to attempt to request federal aid. This is a long process, and both 2015 floods, it did not pan out. But it is my job to do it, so we have stuck, we have done that in the village of Milford. We did that in the village of Woodland, and we have been taking phone damage assessments all week. And starting Friday, most likely, I will be bringing an emergency management assistant team or EMAT team, local mutual aid of other emergency managers in the state of Illinois, to help out damage assessment in the rest of the impact areas, including Watsika and in rural areas around Watsika, including northern Iroquois River, rural areas as well, including the subdivisions of Timberlong, Playdo, Oak Creek and a couple others. This disaster declaration lasts for seven days, according to Iroquois County ordinance. After that, in order to extend the declaration, it must be approved by a full board. At this time, you can decide to do it or not, and if you do, you can put whatever date you want to extend it to. You can even say to be determined or indeterminate. So, that is up to you. There are a plethora of things I can go on about, so at this point, I'd just like to open it up to questions. So, we're not here all day. Ma'am?
Can you just fill us in on how long you and these women think it will take? What, what we should look at as a timeframe in this matter?
Concerning the disaster declaration?
Yes.
I think thirty days is a reasonable time period. If it goes beyond that, you can extend it again as a full board. The city of Watsika extended their disaster declaration last night, and they did a thirty-day timeframe. Sir?
I think we should go upon your recommendation, it's your expertise, whatever you think. As far as I'm concerned, I can go along with.
Appreciate that.
Sir?
Has there been, has there been any discussion on how to fix this problem?
That is hazard mitigation, and there has been discussion about that over a number of years. It is my job to put together a five-year natural hazard mitigation plan. This was done before I started the job. I can't remember what year, I apologize. And a contracted company was hired to put the plan together. That plan has since expired, and I've been in communication with the board about it, and I haven't had time to put it back together.
Well, this has been going on for, ever since I was little boy. I grew up here in Watsika. The rivers are clogged with junk. They need to be cleaned out so the water can move on up to the north. And I think there was a dyke built fifteen, twenty years ago on the south side of town. It helped some of the homes out there, but the flooding seemed to get worse to the north after that dyke was built. So, there needs to be, Watsika is a disaster. With the flooding, their people can't afford insurance because they can't. They don't, they're, they're not, there's no industry here anymore. It, it needs to be some, a reservoir or clean out the rivers or something to help, help this water escape the Watsika area.
I entirely agree with you. There needs to be something. And in my aptitude, spare time, I am doing my best. I regret that I have not been able to update the natural hazard mitigation plan. It's a personal shortfall for me. And I'd love to do something about it. Eventually, it comes down to numbers and cash. So, I'd appreciate it if you could work with me on that after this disaster is over. There are a number of reasons why flooding happens here, and there are a number of implications of anything we do to mitigate that, what it affects communities around us, so. Yes, and we need to have the conversation on later.
I, I think we'd all appreciate it if you made that priority.
Right, right now, Mr. Sisi's involved in, in this disaster, and that's something he can't address until after this is over.
You know what? It's an important topic for the county of Watsika.
Yes, sir, I agree, but I-
It is a priority.
I agree, but right now, Mr. Sisi's working fourteen to sixteen hours every day on this issue, and he's not going to spend any time on anything else.
I understand he's a busy man, but there's people out of their homes, too. They're more important than anything else.
That's what he's working on right now. Mr. Bills?
This is a very sobering, life-changing event. You know, I happen to live in the given area that is just one of the areas that is greatly affected. And, you know, I have, I feel the personal loss that people have. And the challenge that they have for tomorrow, because most of them are going to probably pull up stakes and leave town. But at this point, the question is in front of us. I think we need to extend this declaration indefinitely until we see a little more light at the end of the tunnel. So, I propose our motion to extend this disaster declaration indefinitely, and we can terminate it when we see that there's an end coming. Mary, does that language be okay, indefinite?
Yes, sir. If I may, before any other comments or voting is made on it, I want to explain what that means to everybody. By extending the disaster declaration, you give emergency purchasing powers to the board chairman and including expenses that we have already acquired and patrol is required expenses, including time for personnel as well as cases. And Iroquois County Public Health Department, as you know, has been accruing expenses. Iroquois County Highway might have expenses. My office has managed to deflate expenses so far, however, I know I'm going to need at least four court, four court bodies within the next five days. So, that means that money will be spent, and kindly, will not come out of my budget because the ordinance says it can come out of the general fund. And that's how disaster purchases are supposed to happen. This is the implications that you're making by extending disaster declarations. I just wanted that to be clear to you.
Mrs., Mrs. Crowe?
I'm trying to recall in the past, I think we put a date certain on it, but we did it like, I don't know, ninety days down the road or something. Don't we have to then resc- do we have to then vote to rescind that? I'm trying to remember.
If you choose to have an indeterminate date, at some point, you will say, the board will have to say, or I believe the chairman may be able to have the ability to say, the disaster's over, we're done. Or you can choose a day in the future, and at that point, when you reach that date, it can either be over or you can extend it further. It is up to you.
At the last flood in 2015, the, the declaration was extended indefinitely, as Mr. Bills was suggesting, and there was a motion made at a later board meeting to rescind it. And my feeling would be that would probably be the best thing for us to do at this particular time. Some of the long-term recovery involved with this is difficult to put a date on.
That's right. I was thinking about something like July one.
Right, no, I, I understand. I understand, but-
Not thirty days. I think that's too limited.
Okay, Mr. Bills has made a motion to extend it indefinitely. Mr. Hasbargen has seconded it. Are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Coconut?
Can we, can we take all the money out of the general fund to account for this disaster, or how does that all work?
No, I, I don't think we're going to take all the money out of the general fund.
But that's where it comes out of, is the general fund, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So, you're in charge of making sure that we don't do that correctly?
That's correct.
I will say-
He's not going to spend any money unless I, unless I authorize it and agree to it. I think he knows I'm pretty stingy that way.
On that note, as far as large-scale disasters go, it's been pretty cheap so far. Moving into recovery, that's often where most expenses are incurred. Example, court bodies. Debris management, the city of Watsika and probably those willing will acquire much cost of that. But, seeing into the future, I'm not, I don't have the details right now. I don't expect it to bankrupt the county. It could, and I've, I said it much during budget hearings, that disasters can be very expensive. But I'm doing my best to deflect all costs. I appreciate it.
I'd like to commend Mr. Sisi and his people that are doing that, and the great job that they're doing.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments? Okay, I guess we'll call a roll. Yep.
Excuse me.
Mr. Schur, this gentleman here, if he allows you to, uh, what? It seemed like this flood, I've got the apartments on West Moses, and the, the people in those apartments, this, this thing came up so quick. It caught those people, they were, they were upstairs. The thing, and it came down in the morning, and there was some water. I mean, it seemed like it came in so fast. I couldn't, usually it kind of creeps in, you know? But it just, there was that one evening, it just, the night it took over. I mean, caught these people unexpected, of course, the stuff was all ruined downstairs because there was probably eighteen inches of water. So, they, they got up in water. So, they, they didn't have a chance. But I don't know what made it come in so quick. Must have been something, I recall all the other floods, so it came in real slow. I don't know what caused this, but I guess maybe just a bigger rain.
Mr. Chairman, and this is a question that beggars chat.
I'll go into more details and explain to future events after the vote, right into the general discussion.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and have the clerk call a roll?
Bills?
Yes.
Coganauer?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Hasbargen?
Yes.
Johnson? McGuinness?
Yes.
McTaggart? Offill? Hersley?
Yes.
Ray- Raymond?
Yes.
Schur?
Yes.
Whitlow?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Do you want to go ahead and answer, comment on that gentleman's comments?
Uh, my speculation, understanding that I am not a scientist. Before we had the two days of rain, last week, we had a lot of snow melt. Two days of heavy rains on top of that compiled back ground, it's still frozen. Caused a lot of rain to come up, a lot of water to come up quickly. So, those are the main reasons why I believe it flooded quickly, also just the sheer amount of water coming down the creek. It came from Sisna, it came from Milford. If you look at the map and look at the watershed, that eventually ends here. Take all this, take this, and take this, and also western Indiana.
One, one thing everyone has to bear in mind, as far as the flooding also is concerned, is that from Milford to Watsika, the elevation drops approximately eight feet. And from Watsika up to the Kankakee River, the drop is about one foot. And that accounts for why the southern half of the county is drained out pretty well, and the northern half is still experiencing high water, flooded roads and so forth.
Uh, I'd like to mention that I have not done this alone. I have a team of volunteers that have been working long hours, and, less than implied with the term volunteer, for free. I've been having daily emergency operations center meetings at 800 and 1700, and all the community partners have been attending those and providing a large help. This is a county-wide effort. Dee Shepherd especially has been able to take on a number of roles to lighten my load with the health department. And thank her enough. Coming to events that I believe everybody should be aware of. Is today Wednesday? All right. Thursday and Friday, a flood help resource center will be held at the old Big R store. That is now a warehouse, 433 West Walnut Street, next to Casey's. That will be from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Thursday and Friday. The purpose of this is for people to have one place to go to attempt to get help if they've been a flood victim. A number of organizations will be there, including my organization for damage assessment, American Red Cross, Catholic Charities, Attorney General's Office, Department of Insurance, so on and so forth. And the purpose is to get people to help they need. Emphasizing FEMA is not here. There is no promise that FEMA will be here. And there's definitely no promise that FEMA will come and write checks. Why is that? That is part of a large process, which I have started with damage assessment, which is what I talked earlier about bringing in that EMAT team. I first had to complete that, send it to this date, then looks at the numbers, and then says, this warrants looking at again, more than milk. If they say, let's look at this again, we bring in a team of, typically, this is how this works. I email, Illinois Emergency Management Agency, FEMA and Small Business Administration team. I take them around to all the affected areas, and we do the exact same thing. Pair the numbers, then compile homes, see how many minors, major or destroyed homes we have. And then that, eventually, we put together, goes to the governor, who then then has the ability to request the federal government for a FEMA disaster declaration, requesting certain programs for grant aid, which could include individual assistance, public assistance for government infrastructure, or hazard mitigation money, or possibly small business administration loans. Then it goes to FEMA Region Five headquarters in Chicago, this is a multi-state region. It passes there, it goes to the FEMA administrator. It passes there, it goes to the president. Long process. This takes a long time, a lot of work, sir.
There's, there's a resource in City Hall, Tom Restor, if you have flood insurance. So, you can go there and he'll fill out a paper for you. He'll fill out the form for you and handle all of it. Doesn't give you an additional thirty thousand dollars from FEMA.
Yes, that is through the National Flood Insurance Program. Flood insurance, in my experience, effectively pays for the enough money to either demolish or elevate your home. Relocation is also knocking, however, we don't usually go with that. And for better information on that, I would refer you to either Bob Girbler for the county or for the city of Watsika, Tom Restor, as you said. And if you live in other municipalities, you need to talk to your code enforcement there. Other events happening later on this week. WQI Radio has started receiving material donations. We have brought them in to better organize that effort, which we, which we very much appreciate. And there will be, we, they will be distributing those materials on Friday at the First Trust and Saving Bank parking lot that is next to the zone, and that will be from new to questionable. These materials are basic painting supplies and hiding supplies, so keep that in mind. And that is another project that Dee Shepherd and the Iroquois County Public Health Department have been taking on. Other events. Muck out. We are bringing in large muck out crews under organized, under authorized organizations. They will start Saturday. We've been taking muck out worse, I'm sorry, I should explain what muck out is. It's cleaning out all the junk. After a flood, you often find mud and lord knows what else in your homes and your basements, and you have a lot of stuff that is damaged and needs to be thrown out. They will assist with that. This does not replace professional services. It does not, it's not mold and break. But it's a first step, and it's exceptionally helpful for people that have been flooded out who are emotionally and physically drained. That Saturday, communicate those services and you can call my office. Organizations will be Luther Insurance Ministries and Team Room Con hopefully. I need to continue that conversation with them on the subject of Team Room Con. Their event on social media, large spontaneous volunteers organizing, which is very, very nice, and we appreciate that, and that's one of the things that makes America great, in my opinion. However, as emergency manager, it scares crap out of me having a bunch of spontaneous volunteers running around the county. So, we are going to have a spontaneous volunteer reception center at the CEOST number nine office, administrative office, 1411 West Lafayette Street, yonder. On Friday from 4:00 PM till 8:00 PM. If you are a spontaneous volunteer and you want to work with help in muck out, you need to go there. If you do not, then we can't help. We appreciate it. But we just need to keep that organized to keep the workers and victims safe.
Have you ever designed that paper?
That was ironed out last night, and it's on the county website.
All the resource dates are on the website?
Yes, sir.
I'll make all these different things.
I apologize. It may not actually be on the website yet.
Or at least very quickly.
Very quickly. If not, it's in my daily press release, which I have been issuing. Last night was at 2300. Wish I did. So, there is that. The location for this spontaneous volunteer reception center was ironed out this way, so that is not going to be released yet. However, in fact, there will be one, perhaps. Sir?
You said there's going to be flood out at Big R. Is, or is anyone told on what information they need to bring with them, or just bring themselves? Is that basically what needs to happen?
Good question. People should bring, obviously, themselves. They should bring a photo ID. They should bring positive pictures of their home. Not many. Doesn't need to be extensive. We're not insurance. And then assets they have. Look, they don't need to bring their assets. Basically, they themselves need to show up. That's the main key, if nothing else. A photo ID would be helpful. Maybe a couple pictures of their home, know their addresses, contact them with themselves, so on and so forth.
Mental health is going to be at the mark, too, for people that are having emotional or spiritual issues.
Absolutely. We're going to have two separate tables, most likely. One for your Iroquois Mental Health Center, which has been incredibly valuable, providing essential services to those, especially out of the shelter. And then there'll be another table for spiritual and emotional care, regardless of faith. Some people have faith, and they need help with that in times of disaster, so we will take care of that.
I'd just like to share with the board that one of the things I think that we could do to help Eric get the word out is, I've been receiving his nightly press release, and that's what I've been posting on my Facebook page. It's official. It's where the county is without comment, nothing else, just the information. I know several of us have Facebook pages. I'm reasonably sure that Eric would be willing to share that with you in your email as well. And because a lot of younger people just don't read the newspaper anymore, they don't listen to the radio. Facebook is the whole picture on the world. It is what it is. So, I'm sure he'd be willing to do that, and we can utilize that.
Yes, indeed. Thank you very much. On the subject, one example. Ms. Crowe has asked what she can do to help, specifically to the board members. If you are looking to help, I could use, one, I need help answering phone calls. If you abandoned my emergency operations center in the past six, seven days. Mr. Raymond, how would you explain?
It's busy.
There you go. Busy. We'll keep it at that.
Lightly.
I could use some help answering phone calls. We have a lot of phone calls with people requesting muck out and damage assessment, so on and so forth. In addition, for the spontaneous volunteer reception center, I need bodies for that to assist with registering these volunteers. But if you're interested, please contact me, and I'll put you to work.
Could you repeat when the volunteer registration is?
Sure. Spontaneous volunteer reception center will be on Friday from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Watsika School District Administrative Office, out on the west edge of town. 1411 West Lafayette Street. Sir?
So, just a recap, Mary. If I have a flood victim company that's in the county, not in, not in the city of Watsika, if you say, Kevin, where do I go first? What's, what's my answer?
To the flood help resource center at Big R.
Oh, I thought. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
One thing I am working on, um, is organizing mass transportation to help people get out in rural areas and other towns that were affected to this location, Watsika, to Big R's work for the flood help resource center. We have picked that location because of the warehouse, we already have some donations and supplies there, uh, but also essentially located to emotional damage, and we are doing our best to make sure that we can get people that have been affected, heavily affected in other areas to that location. Thank you.
If I could make an announcement, this does pertain to the flood. James Martyr, who is running in the 16th District for Congress, is coming here specifically to talk to victims and even board members about, not just to talk, but to find solutions for the problem here in Igerway County with the flooding. He'll be here tomorrow at the new cafe, the C.R. Cafe, at 4:30 tomorrow. So, he is interested, and he wants to see what can be done.
I, I guess along those lines, I would mention that at, at last Thursday evening, the governor was in the county, and he, along with Representative Kinzinger, Congressman Kinzinger, State Senator Barrickman, and Representative Tom Bennett, visited with the shelter here in town, and I think they demonstrated their compassion and care and concern, and I think we could see the residents that were at the shelter how distraught and emotionally upset they were. Also, on Sunday morning, Senator Durbin called me and expressed his concerns. What all this amounts to is that there's apparently some concern, you can put a lot of labels on it, but nevertheless, there's limits as to what they can do as far as getting any financial aid, and this is what Eric is working on very diligently, to try and amass the facts and figures so that we can comply with federal guidelines and so forth. These are processes and procedures that are already established, things that have to be followed. They're somewhat burdensome and time-consuming, but it's, it's all a process that has to be going through in an orderly manner, and that in part explains why we have to channel everything through Eric. He's got a lot on his shoulders, and he's doing a wonderful job. Is there anything else we need to talk about regarding the flood? If not, we'll move on. Thank you very much, Eric. Move on to our discussion and action regarding the telecommunicator union matter.
Mr. Jim. Mr. Jim. Before we go on, let me tell you that it seems like six months later, everybody's gonna forget about this, and all the things we should be working on, nobody will care about all of a sudden, because of great things of the past. 2015, I'd say it's that way, 2008, it was that way, when we had year record. Six months later, everybody wants to forget about it, unless they own it.
Well, as Mr. Persley said, it's an important matter. It's up to the board to do that. I can tell you, uh, I've had numerous conversations with Mayor Harwood about it over, since the 2015 flood. A big part of the problem is nobody has a workable solution. That doesn't mean we should give up, doesn't mean we shouldn't continue to search for one, but nevertheless, that's the fact. So, okay, we'll move on to our discussion and action regarding the telecommunicator matter. Everyone has a copy in front of you that was distributed by email yesterday, and you have a copy in front of you about a communication that we've had with Clark Barrett and Smith, Attorneys at Law. I believe we have a representative from that organization with us this morning, and I'd like to-
I'll make the introduction, John.
Okay, good. Yeah, in a minute. Now, to make it, after you do that, we'll go into executive session.
Past, past few weeks, I was asked to seek basically a second opinion in regard to our option to perpetrate our interest in a more decision. And so, I contacted a couple of lawyers, I suspect, and asked for recommendations of a law firm or law firms in the state of Illinois that are well-versed in these kinds of matters. And one of the law firms is the law firm, Clark Barrett and Smith, and so they were one of the law firms that I contacted, and I spoke with Robert Smith, who was one of the partners of that law firm, and was very impressed with what he felt he could do as far as giving us advice. And that's what I was asking for, is advice. Um, I'm not an expert in labor law, and I don't pretend to be. So, we have to go, if we're going to make major decisions regarding interest arbitration, we have to go with people who know what they're doing, and who have experience in these matters. So, in speaking with Mr. Smith, I did sign an engagement letter with the law firm, engaging them professionally in giving advice to the county as to the best way forward in regard to this decision of the arbitrator. And so, Attorney James Powers is here with us this morning, he is with that law firm, and he authored, I believe he authored, uh, this information, this letter that you have in front of you. Um, I've read it a couple of times, it's a lot to digest. He is here to answer your questions, um, and provide some guidance to the board, and so once we go into executive session, I'll ask him to answer your questions, and we'll see what we need to do.
Okay, at this time, we'd entertain a motion to enter into executive session. Mrs. Crow, is there a second? Mr. Persley? Call the roll, please.
Kokenhour.
Yes.
Crow.
Yes.
Hasbarg.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
McTaggart.
Yes.
Awkell.
Yes.
Hersley.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Schur.
Yes.
Whitlow.
Yes.
Bills.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. We're going to ring into executive session.